Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, since our last meeting, although it may not feel like it from recent temperatures, the last days of summer have officially passed. Buncombe County is a place where people travel to from all over the country and all over the world to enjoy the beauty of our mountains and our community. Before we begin our meeting this evening, let's take a moment to reflect on how fortunate we are to live in these beautiful mountains. Let us have a moment for silent prayer or appreciation for our mountain home, which we have inherited, and to be good stewards of this creation for our children and all those who will come after. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to announce that we have parking validation and bus passes available for any members of the public who use the county parking garage next door to attend this meeting or use transit to attend the meeting. You can pick up parking validation or transit passes or transit validation for many of the officers who are here this evening. Feel free to see them on the way out. I'm going to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the code of ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, and to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, and to faithfully perform the duties of the office to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Are there any items on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have any financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the board at this meeting. Okay. We come to the consent agenda, and I've heard a request that we move the, in the consideration of the rest of the agenda, I've heard a request that we move the financial quarterly report up on the agenda. Is that what you were asking for, Ms. Pender?
Not residential waste, yes.
I'm sorry, the...
The public's here for this one.
Yeah, the, okay, yeah, all right, so the presentation...
Proclamation first.
The proclamation first, but the residential waste collection discussion, we will move up to, and we'll take that up immediately after the manufacturing week and day proclamation. Okay. Sounds good. We are also going to take the Task Order 20-03 contract item off of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda? All in favor, please say, I'm sorry. Does any member of the public have a question about any items on the consent agenda? All right. All in favor of the other items on the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Under good news, we've got Nate Pennington, who is going to be presenting an affordable housing recognition. Or do you want, did you want, I'm sorry. That was what I had first on the agenda. You want to, okay. Nate, hang on, we're going to come back to you, all right? But we're going to do the manufacturing day and week proclamation, all right?
And then we're going to do Waste Pro.
And then, and then we'll do that. So we've got a resolution, and Commissioner Amanda Edwards is going to present it for us. You want to go up? Why don't you go up to the mic? Yeah, that'd be great, and thank you for doing that.
That's next.
Proclamation in support of Manufacturing Day by the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. Whereas, North Carolina is home to the largest manufacturing workforce in the southeast and the ninth largest in the United States, employing more than 470,000 workers, representing more than 10% of the total workforce. And whereas, Buncombe County is home to over 350 manufacturing firms specializing in the manufacture of a wide range of products, including automotive and heavy-duty truck components, aviation components, food and beverage, plastics, healthcare devices, printing, and related support activities, and more. And whereas, over the past five years, manufacturing jobs have increased by more than 20% in Buncombe County, adding approximately 2,400 jobs. And whereas, manufacturing firms in Buncombe County support educational institutions, including Asheville City Schools, Buncombe County Schools, AB Tech, UNC Asheville, Western Carolina University, along with many other educational institutions, nonprofits, and charities in the county. And whereas, Asheville City Schools, Buncombe County Schools, AB Tech, and other educational institutions in the region offer state-of-the-art instruction in high-demand careers, serving the workforce needs of manufacturing employees in the region. And whereas, four of the top 10 property taxpayers in Buncombe County are manufacturing firms. And whereas, manufacturing firms in the region have invested more than $1 billion in capital investment over the past decade. And whereas, Buncombe County's average manufacturing wage in the county is $66,907, which makes manufacturing one of the highest-paying sectors in the county. And whereas, Buncombe County's 13,000-plus manufacturing jobs generate direct wages of over $800 million annually. And whereas, as part of the National Manufacturing Week, the week of September 30th to October 4th, and Manufacturing Day, October 4th, 2019, thousands of educators, teachers, and workforce partners will visit local manufacturing firms to increase awareness of the career opportunities available in this sector. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners as follows, that October 4th, 2018 be declared Manufacturing Day in Buncombe County, that citizens be urged to recognize the contribution that our local manufacturing sector makes in the successful growth, development, and economic health of our entire community. This is adopted on the first day of October 2019 by Brownie Newman, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I think we've got a couple of folks here who would like to say a few words about, in recognition of this week.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, Clark.
If I may recognize some partners that are with us tonight. If y'all would stand. Kevin Kemery, Director of Customized Industry Training with AB Tech. My colleague, April Brown, who leads Industry Expansion Services and Workforce Development Services for our EDC. Of course, Nathan Ramsey and Barbara Darby, representing the Mountain Area Workforce Development Board. And in her absence, I'll also mention that our good friend Amy Sparks was here earlier this evening but had to depart, representing Nipro and their 350 employees in South Buncombe County. Thank you for this proclamation, but most importantly, for the leadership of the commission in championing the growth in this sector that is driving wages and sustainable tax growth in our community, and perhaps most importantly, offering meaningful career ladders and economic opportunity for our residents regardless of previous work or educational experience. So I will give you, believe it or not, two more data points, and then I'll get out of your hair. Over the last five years, the Asheville metro area has led the 10 most populous metros in North Carolina in percentage growth of GDP and percentage growth of manufacturing jobs. And that's pretty impressive for the sixth-largest metro area in our state. We'll be celebrating that this coming Friday, October 4th, from 11:00 to 2:00 at Thermo Fisher Scientific in Weaverville. You're all invited to join us there. If you can't make it, we also have some stickers I'll let Tim deliver to you if you'd like to mark the day proudly with on your lapel. Thank you for this opportunity and recognition for our important citizens in manufacturing.
Thank you, Clark, and thank you all for being here. All right, and Commissioner Ramsey, it's always great to see you back at the county. Thank you for being with us and for all your work in this important, important arena. All right. So we are, we agreed we're going to move up the residential waste collection item on the agenda, so we'll take that up now, and I believe we have Dane Peterson with us to do a short presentation.
He's already presented. We have people in the audience that, some of them want to be home before dark, and we just need to hear from the people. Dane and him can answer.
I'll do whatever the pleasure of the board is on this. We, it is...
He doesn't have a new presentation, it's the same from last time.
It's the same information as last time. That's fine, if you guys would like to just take public comment, that's fine with me.
Y'all want to have Dane just come up there where he's close by and be ready for the questions?
Then he can answer questions, but he don't need to present.
Okay, that's fine. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this item? Yes, ma'am, we'll start with you. Yes, sir. Yes, so come on up and please share your, your name and, and where you live, and who are the other folks who wanted to comment at the, at the microphone, yes. And you'll have three minutes to, to speak with us, and there'll be, you'll get a light when you have 30 seconds left, and when the red light comes on, you've had your three minutes, and we want to treat everyone the same, so when, when your three minutes is up, please, please discontinue your comments at that, at that time.
Chairman, can I just suggest something that, that maybe Dane, maybe you could jot down just the questions that they have, and then when everybody's finished, you could come up and, and address them? Chairman, would that be okay? That way, people would get all their questions asked and maybe it'd move along pretty quick.
I think that's fine, instead of, you know, right, instead of folks kind of, let's, let's get all the comments and questions on the table, and then I'm sure it'd be great to have our staff comment to respond to some of the questions and concerns.
Okay, so I should start talking when this starts? Yes?
You're fine to go ahead and start, yes, ma'am. Go ahead, there you go.
If you look at me, how am I going to handle one of these carts on a gravel driveway, like 500 feet? You know, I'm, you can see what I look like, this is too heavy, my husband, we're both 83, he has heart problems, back problems, he can't do it. Sometimes our son can do it for us, but not all the time. The driveway is, someone said 500 feet, it takes me three and a half minutes to walk. What are we supposed to do? It's gravel, it's not smooth pavement as you would find in the city. Now, we manage. If no one else is available, I can lift one of the bags, put it in the car, well, put all the bags in the car, one at a time, and take them to the road. I can't manage a cart and all, all of that. Let's see. I'd like to know if we haven't correctly estimated on what kind of cart we have, we're getting, how and when could we change and what would it cost? What should we do if their carts, we'll probably wind up leaving them at the, on the, by the road. There's no pavement, the road's paved, but there's no pavement on the side of the road. There's no curb, no pavement. What if, what if the carts get stolen or vandalized? I'll put our address on them, though. How stable are they, on a slight slope? Remember, this is not a nice city lawn, this, or something like that. This is the country. I don't know what people were thinking of. Will the cart be put back exactly in the same place? We'll have to have them someplace where the mailman won't be inconvenienced, where he can get to the mailbox. What if everything doesn't fit in the can? After out-of-town visitors, for instance. Now, you're raising the price, reducing the service every other week, and causing problems for people with long driveways. What about the people who had expensive bear-proof cans? How many people will lose their jobs in January? Well, okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Who would like to go next? Yeah, let's take the folks, and then we'll kind of work on this side of the room, and then we'll come over. So yes, ma'am, you may go next, and then who else on this side of the room would like to speak? Okay.
Hi, my name is Vicky O'Shields, I live in Fairview. Most of my sentiments were expressed by this lady, the concerns about the long driveway. We have quite a hill on our driveway, we live about 660 feet from 74A. Right now, we can take our garbage to 74A in our car, but we cannot take it in a container going forward. And so what we will end up doing is canceling our Waste Pro contract and taking our garbage to the transfer station, probably, which, if enough people do that, then there's going to be the, the issue of probably higher costs to the, the people left because of the loss of revenue to Waste Pro, but also, and I just lost my train of thought, but also the increased services that would be necessary at, at the transfer station. And then the other thing, as the, the previous speaker mentioned about people leaving their cans at the road, then that's going to create traffic hazards, that's going to create an eyesore, because here we're going to be driving down 74, Old Fort Road, any of the roads in the country, and you're going to be seeing Waste Pro cans all on the side of the road. And so I, I just think there needs to be a better solution for the county. I understand the reasons behind all of this, but I think there, there needs to be a better solution for the county, because one size doesn't fit all, and what works in the city, what works in the subdivision, does not really work well in the county. So I would hope you would reconsider and come up with a better solution. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, who over here? Yes, ma'am, we'll start with you, and then who else on this side, and then this gentleman can go next.
Hello, my name is Candace Yant, I live at 15 Echoing Ridge in Fairview. And I think this is a, maybe not quite completely thought out for a number of reasons, and I agree with what was stated previously here. My big concern is safety. Safety is a big deal, especially on our skinny little roads. In my case, six and a half miles of windy road with banks and, you know, curves that you can't see around. We're going to have bad weather. These cans cannot be put in a flat surface in many cases, they're going to be teetering, there are going, there's going to be wind, and there's going to be bad weather. They're going to be blowing in the road. We already have a dangerous road because of the lay of the land. This is really a safety concern, and that's my number-one issue. Number two, it's almost impossible, we can't take one of these big things from our house and put it into a truck, we can't do it. So right now, we have extra, extra tough garbage can, the contractor bags. We get up at 5:00 in the morning and we haul them down in our cars. We can't haul this. These things, these receptacles are going to be all over the place. Now, we're all concerned, and we're very happy with the fact that we have this beautiful landscape, and we do a lot with the Chamber of Commerce to promote people coming here. What is that going to look like? It's going to look like perpetual garbage day, because we're going to have these cans out there unsightly, they don't look good, and no matter what you do, they're going to be blowing around, and they're not going to be looking good, they're going to be an inconvenience. But hey, we got to look at the safety issue, number one. Okay, that's about all I had to say. Thank you for your attention.
All right, thank you very much.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to share some thoughts with you. I'm John Hoffman, I'm here with my wife Renee. We live at the Broad River Community off Highway 9, about 10 miles south of Black Mountain. I think it's pretty clear this was a plan to implement an urban-city-type trash, trash solution to reduce cost without much consideration of the fact that many of us live in an urban forest interface. That has connotations, many of which you've heard here already. We're used to delivering to collection points along Highway 9, up and down that entire road. If you drive in on Thursday morning, you'll see piles of trash out on the sides of the road that are picked up. That, that has not been considered in this situation, because hauling a trash can down from our house, it's a mile-plus gravel road, about a 700-foot elevation change. You're not going to drag one of these that way, and it's difficult to put in your car to bring it down and to bring it back up. This is going to be a challenge. Elderly people like myself, it's even more of a challenge. So this has got to have a better solution. Given the fact that we have a collection system already in place, why was this not considered? I don't think this was well-thought-out. If we continued a collection process as we've been doing, but changed a little bit how we do it, we could solve this problem. National Park uses very large bear-proof-type containers in the parks. Why couldn't we be using those? We bring our trash, put it in those containers, one of their big trucks drives up, picks it up, dumps it, and drives away. It's a lot less work for them, and it would save us having to tote these containers or having them all over the road. We're using collection points already, let's work with those collection points. Where we are, you could do this at the fire department, put one for trash, one for recycling, everybody brings their stuff down, puts it in the containers, and Waste Pro comes and empties it, instead of having to drive up Rock Creek Road and hit all these collection points where everything is now stashed. This is a very simple solution, I think it would be something that could be easily thought out, wouldn't cost the county, it's Waste Pro's responsibility to pick it up. Instead of distributing all these idiot trash cans, which don't work in an urban forest environment, as has already been demonstrated, you put collection points in. They're not really transfer stations, they don't have to be attended, they're simply very large containers in which the trash can go, they can be put behind trees, they can be put out of sight, and they're not going to be sitting on the side of Highway 9, like the trash is every morning now. So I see it as an improvement. I think that Dane needs to get with Waste Pro, they need to be charged with the responsibility to come up with a solution that works on the urban forest interface. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Who else? This gentleman on the, here, and then Mr. Yelton, you can go next. Okay, we'll get to everyone.
I'm Ron Edwards, I live off of Ballgaff Road. I've got the same concerns the rest of these people have. I've got an eighth-mile-plus, and I've got to drag a 96-gallon trash can up every Tuesday. It's not going to happen, I'm going to end up leaving it sitting on the side of the road. Okay, okay. The other issue that I have is the fact that you're requiring us to have two cans, one for trash and one for recycle. If we choose not to use the recycle, we still get charged. Irregardless, we have to pay for it. Not sure that should be that way. With that being said, those are the two main concerns I've got. So hopefully y'all can do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mr. Yelton?
I'd like to go really deep in this issue. First and foremost, I think you've heard all the reasons there's going to be problems with the system, but I would like to suggest that you put your brakes on, stop, right where you're at. Because when I look at, reading the explanation of the system, I find if I have a missed trash pickup day, the first person I call is Waste Pro. That should not be, it should be someone in the county documenting those missed calls. Number two, there are lots of problems with these containers, as just been pointed out. You've heard them all. Now, the other problem, though, because I do know that Waste Pro has been working with Florida very well trying to solve problems, and I think they want this contract, or they would not have bid it for that price, because all the other people are talking about $35 and $40 a month to do what they're doing. So they want it. And guess what? If they'll solve these problems in the county, then they can turn around and go to the city where, ma'am, they do have that density in the city, and they can save the city residents about $7 to $8 a month per house. So I think it behooves Buncombe County to take the leadership in this. You commissioners say, whoa, right now, let's take our time, let's look at this, because I just read an article today about a brand-new recycling plant being, listen to what they recycle. Film bags, blue bags that are no good, grocery bags that's no good, they, they bale those up as film. They bale up hard plastic, they bale up aluminum, they bale up metal, and they bale up clean paper, not been contaminated with glass. Glass is the number-one contaminant of your recyclables, and the people that are throwing them in with your recyclables are destroying the value of the paper, which is why China quit buying it. So this problem goes far beyond this board, far beyond Waste Pro, far beyond these people's problems. And by the way, you was talking about putting that dumpster out there? I've never seen a dumpster anywhere that didn't have trash around it, and the problem Waste Pro has with that is, are they being paid by each person that dumps that trash in there? So the bag-tag system will work for those people that refuse and don't want to use or can't use a rollout cart. The bag-tag system is very simple. You have a monthly access fee, and they buy the tags for a dollar a bag, and attach them to the bag, and Waste Pro doesn't pick up anything that's not got a tag on it or in one of their containers, if, for those people that want containers. So I think they want to solve the problem, folks. Y'all are going to have to provide the leadership to see that happens.
All right, who else? Yes, sir. And then Mr. Rice, you can follow this gentleman.
My name's John Hogan, I live in Fairview Bishop Bridge Road. I think I'd vote for that gentleman right there if there was an election this week. Appreciate your word, sir. I'm one of six families that lives way back from the highway, from 74A. I have questions, Waste Pro's here, I'd like answers. First of all, whose legal opinion is it that we can put their property on the state right-of-way? 74A has a 14-foot right-of-way on either side of the curb, all the way from Reynolds to wherever it ends. In front of my property, the right-of-way is 40 feet. It's sloped, 45-degree angle almost. There is no place for us to put these cans near the curb within reach of a Waste Pro truck, it just doesn't exist. The state re-engineered all the driveways when they widened the road. So if we were to get, for our six families, 12 cans up at the end of the road where it joins 74A, you would be, find it impossible to see how to get onto the highway. You'd be looking at nothing but cans, because you're coming up the hill like this, the road's like that, and you're going to have cans and guardrails on both sides. There'd be no visibility to safely get onto the highway, or if you're trying to turn onto our road, to be able to make the turn and see if there was a car sitting there waiting to get out. It's totally unsafe. We are told, I called Waste Pro this morning, I was told they own the carts, but we have responsibility for them. If they blow into the highway and cause an accident, it's our problem, not theirs. I don't buy that for a second. They tell us where to put it, it's their cart, they come, lift them up, empty them, put them back down theoretically in the same place, and then it's our responsibility if stuff happens at that point? They're going to get blown on the highway 20 times a week, it's going to be like driving through an obstacle course. The whole thing is totally unsafe. I'd like to see someone from this board and from Waste Pro meet the people of Fairview, especially like at a corner like mine, and tell us exactly how this system's going to work where no one gets killed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I think following up on this gentleman is a very good point, and that is, if you've got all these customers on the rural road... got all these customers on the rural road, you've got a state-maintained road, and the state's got a certain access to that road, your driveway does not connect except at that entrance, you don't have a place to put these containers. The other thing is, everybody that puts these containers into the road is going to have to build some kind of containment, even if it's a four-by-four structure, to set it on and get it away from the road, because the mowing machines are going to be coming along the road to mow. Plus, you're going to have an added expense as a customer, not just the monthly payment, but to maintain this structure that you've got to set these things on. So you've got to look at the bigger picture than just the trash pickup. You've got to look what we're going to have to maintain, and that's a valid point. Thank you.
Great. All right, anyone else? Yes, sir. Can you hear me speak?
My name is Michael McGee, and I live on Laurelhaven Road. The big, I, first of all, I agree totally with what everybody has been explaining, and I think it's been pretty well represented, and it's widely through the entire county where we have the same kind of problem that's being proposed. My main concern though is a little different than that, is the consistency and the continuity of delivery or pickup that comes in. We have, there's not a month goes by that we don't, our trash is not picked up, and we end up having to try to call, I'm sure Waste Pro has got us, you know, they know exactly who we are, because we're constantly calling them about not picking up the trash. We live on a long dirt road, and we live at the end of the road, and we don't get our trash picked up as often as it's supposed to. It means that we're trying to call back, we often end up, I end up carrying my trash around with me wherever I go, in the back of my pickup truck, because there's no place to put it when I come back to my house. So this is just another part of the problem that Waste Pro needs to really address. We don't even, we would like to recycle, but the recycling part of their pickup is even worse than the trash pickup, and it ends up with a long time that we don't even have our trash, our recycle pickup, and so we've just stopped doing that, and it's unfortunate because we believe in it, but we need to get our trash picked up. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, well, thank you all for coming to our meeting this evening, we apologize that it started later than usual, five o'clock start time, and so thanks for your patience. Dane, would you like to just share any observations or initial kind of feedback in terms of, I'm sure, you know, these are not the only times you've heard some of these questions and concerns, so any initial feedback that you would share for the public and the commission?
Absolutely. Well, thank y'all for coming in and sharing those concerns with us this evening, and understanding the challenges that you folks face, and a lot of the challenges that we face at the county level in managing the waste and the recycling. And obviously jotting down some of the questions and concerns that we've heard, we certainly made provisions in the contract that if there was no physically-able-bodied person within a household, that that accommodation would be made by Waste Pro, if a doctor's note is provided, that they would provide that backdoor service at no additional charge. So that was something that we thought about, we knew that there were going to be folks that were just unable to get that material to the collection point, so we certainly understand that, and please reach out to Waste Pro regarding that with a doctor's note for that.
Dane, how would they do that? Would they contact the county, or would they send that straight to Waste Pro and copy the county so that we would...
That would be the process moving forward, is contacting Waste Pro directly, or sending to Waste Pro directly and copying the county, and that way we can help with those counts as well. Is that, I think that's the process we would like to see. And also understanding the 96 gallons, which are the industry standard. We know Bonham County's a great place to live, there's nothing standard about it, we didn't approach it like that. It's hard to get a grid overlay for all the areas, because there's such a, I would say, gap in consistency with the terrain, so very difficult to pick up, you know, in a lot of these outlying areas. So we knew it was important, we started off with the 96-gallon options period, that's where we started, and we realized, looking at that, there was going to be substantial challenges with that size of container for a lot of folks. So that's when we worked with Waste Pro, and, you know, appreciated Waste Pro coming back with us to the table and saying, look, we can provide smaller cart-size options for folks, and, you know, looking at the 48-gallon, the 64, and the 96-gallon containers. So, and just, I heard a question about pricing, it is $19.21 per month, period, that's the base price, that's including the recycle container as well as the waste rollout container, and the service there for those containers. And as been mentioned, the trash is weekly collection, and the recycle is every other week collection, and that was, looking at other communities and how they manage the recycling stream, that was something we identified as a way that we could hopefully save costs and translate that down to subscriber fees by reducing the amount of collection trips, cutting that in half essentially by going to every other week collection for recycling. As Mr. Yelton pointed out, recycling is a dynamic industry right now, when the doors basically shut on the China side for exporting materials from not just our country, but, you know, a lot of other nations were impacted by that. A lot of things have changed, and that's one of our primary focuses now, is to clean up our recycling stream and our materials. So this is a big step towards that. Obviously, we do look at trends in the industry, and we, you know, will stay in tune with that, but the plastic bags are one of the top contaminants that is impacting the recycling stream. So that was certainly something that we saw as a benefit by, number one, educating, and then also providing a container so that folks can work towards pulling the bags out. Currently, as folks know, we're in the cart-selection process right now. This contract is not effective until January 1st of this coming year, 2020, so services will continue as they are now until the 1st of the year, and we're trying to get word out, I know Waste Pro is as well, trying to touch as many subscribers as we can now, and make sure that people are getting the cart sizes that is going to work for their situation, and getting that feedback and getting those orders in. And we would anticipate, Chip, I'd say around end of October timeframe for cart deliveries to begin.
To begin.
Mm-hmm, yes. So seeing some of those carts phasing into delivery, end of October, early November timeframe. The long driveways, that was another part of the RFP proposal, we knew we had to provide an opportunity for folks if they so choose to have a premium service, which is basically going from the designated collection point, generally curbside or mailbox collection point, and if they want to choose a premium-type service, that's an up-charge, but Waste Pro does provide that option, to provide the backdoor type, the premium-type service. So that's basically, could look like a different truck, you know, obviously for narrow lanes, things like that, but there is an additional charge for that. We know that some folks would like that option, so we made sure we included that in the RFP as well. The safety concerns are twofold, there's safety concerns certainly on the collection side, and those are things that we targeted. You know, obviously, these folks that are out picking up the waste, recycle material, they're citizens here as well, and we're looking at trying to improve safety functions on their end as well. It's the fifth most dangerous job in our nation, and 35 people were killed in 2018, so it is a huge nationwide issue with safety for these collection workers, and these are people that live here, and they're friends, they're family, so I certainly understand the safety concerns that have been brought up here this evening. And I know Waste Pro is currently conducting site assessments now, people are calling in requesting, saying, hey, I need you to look at this, you know, how does this look at my collection point for the rollout carts to, you know, be staged, and where does that look? So that, you know, in some of these sites, that causes a little creativity, you know, we understand the constraints there, and Waste Pro's working with folks now to try to help them understand what's expected for them to bring their materials down to the collection points, and that's happening now.
Dane, most of these roads, including mine, I mean, you know, my driveway's 800 feet, and across the street in rural Kandlar, and across the street from me is, their driveway's like six, you know, and they're excited about getting a 90-some gallon. I didn't do that, I got a 48-gallon, you know, because that's all I needed, and I didn't want to haul it out there either. But where I'm at, somebody mentioned something about mailboxes, you know, the trash cans were, all our trash cans, whatever we had, were sitting out around mailboxes, because there's a driveway there, and we didn't stick it in the road. And so Waste Pro had to figure out how to get those out of our driveway. I don't think that's going to be any different. I mean, there is no way that I'm going to be able to put that, the people on our road, which is, what, four or five, that there's not going to be two cans out there each week, there's only going to be one. So, I mean, I heard somebody mention something about six families having, there'd be 12, it'd actually be six, but it'd be every week.
That would be for A-week, B-week, right?
If they recycle that much, which we do. But, you know, where my road is, my mind just went blank, gentleman from Waste Pro. Chip, yeah, C., I was getting ready to call you Clint. But, but I'm assuming that those are going to have to be moved over, clamped, and then put in the back of the truck. There's still going to be some labor involved, and I think people are picturing that these are going to be beautifully lined up in Kandlar, that ain't going to happen, you know, beautifully lined up on the road where they can just come by and clamp them and dump them in the truck. It's not going to be that way. There are going to be those, they're going to still be in my driveway, our driveway. They're still going to be lined up in that driveway, and somebody's going to have to move them over, clamp them, and dump them, and then put them back in the driveway somewhere, you know. And I'm like, I'm like most people, I'm always, anybody hunting for your lid in the room? After you drop, yeah, so. But, so, I mean, people are picturing that those are going to be lined up, they're not going to be, they can't be, and so, and I'm assuming that Waste Pro will be figuring that out as we go, but didn't mean to take up so much time, I just wanted to, you know, kind of paint a picture, you know, of my road's very similar to some of the others that's been mentioned, so.
I'm sure, thank you, Commissioner.
Okay.
The, I did hear a comment regarding the service levels, I know that's a focus that the county has, working with Waste Pro on continuous improvement and addressing some of the issues that we've seen in the past, and we knew that was important to include in the new contract accountability measures there within. The performance bond was one measure we incorporated in the contract, and that's throughout the duration of the contract, that is a performance bond, and also there's a liquidated damages schedule, so that if performance level is not where that it should be, we have, we have measures to be able to implement monetary penalties, and that's geared towards the accountability metrics, and we want to work together, and I know Waste Pro expects to be held accountable for service.
Dane?
Sir?
I have some stuff to say. I understand where we're at, but I see these people still sitting in the room. I canceled mine yesterday, because I've been telling everybody that I can't get the can up my driveway. So I had an, I asked to get 33-gallon cans, because there is a 33-gallon that works with these trucks. Might not work with the one with arm on the side, but it definitely works with the trucks that dump from the rear. You're still going to have them, you're going to only have supposedly five of these other trucks. Most of the people in this room I see are basically from Fairview, that's where I'm from. You know, it's a little different there, you know, they're talking about 74A, it's a totally different world than where Joe lives up, but I'm sitting up here, and I look at everything that this commission has done. They have given 2.2 million to a nonprofit. They have, we've done stuff for children, 3.6 million. We have a building next door that we do for people that are, you know, badly abused. We, now, we get people out of jail, we spend thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars to be able to help get people out of jail. And now we're going to do drug deals over to jail, and that's going to cost the county money too. But I look in this audience, there's some 83-year-olds, and I met a 90-year-old the other day, and Men Chip talked about him, you know, he didn't make it tonight, but he's going to try to, he had a cane and stuff. Brownie met him, he draws $807 a month, you know. I've talked to a lady that, you know, she canceled her service, and she's going to figure out, try to figure out how to get her bag of trash a week, not 96 gallons, one little white bag, a dollar a week. But when she called Waste Pro, they told her, well, they'd come up her dirt road and pick it up for $25 extra. There's your thing. She's had three, she's not here, but she's had cancer three different times. She's 77 years old, and she draws $757. But we're sitting up here, we're giving money to everything in this county, this whole board, just thinks up stuff to give millions of dollars to. Nonprofits, MHO, nonprofit, 2.2 million with no interest for 20 years, and we can't figure out how to help the older people, we help the kids, we help the middle, we help everybody, and as I told you, I'm part of the older generation now. Al is too, but he lives in the city. The county's different. I said, if you get a 33-gallon can, I'll stay on, and I'll drag it back up my driveway with my arm out of the car, and I've got a picture on my phone of how I do it. But I can't drag a 49-gallon, or I can't drag a 69 or a 96-gallon, period. I don't have that much trash. So somebody with a 96-gallon can fills it up, and it gets dumped in the truck, and then you've got one person that puts one bag in a 96-gallon, you know, the person with the one bag's getting charged the same price as the person with the other bag. This was mis-thought, us, y'all, them, and it needs to be fixed, because the guy for Broad River area, Highway nine, yeah, he's talking about different things. I've talked to people, I've talked to everybody that sent me an email, as long as there's a phone number, everybody. Even saw the gentleman that came up here trying to figure out, you know, he called Waste Pro, and Waste Pro, we didn't, yeah, they called him, and they told him if they'd pay the $48, that they'd send him $16 back so he could cancel his, you know, prescription with them, or whatever you want to call it. But I'm sick of what we do to the older people. I am so sick of that. Once you get to 65, you're supposed to be able to retire. Well, there's people saying that they can't get these cans down these dirt routes. What are you saying? Nothing. Go get me a slip from the doctor. Well, I can get you a slip from the doctor, but I'm not going to. I'm going to take my trash, my two bags, to the transfer station. And I thank these people for coming in tonight, you know, there's more said that they would try to come, I've had calls saying that they could not come because they had health issues. Health issues are something that a lot of us have. And Chip, this first of the month, I canceled mine yesterday, but these people need an option. They still don't know exactly where they're at. If they decide they don't want your can, they need to be able to say, I don't want it, you know, plain and simple. It don't need to be the first month, September, don't need, you know, give them October 15th, give them something, you know, and two cans, you know, it's just like the gentleman said, it's harder to have two cans and be able to do whatever. But I'm looking on this front row, we've got two people out here that's 83 years old. They can't, you know, I'm proud that they're here. I'm proud of all of what everybody that spoke. But we're sitting here talking about the same thing that we presented on that screen over and over and over. It's time to figure out how we can help. We can sit here and watch the nonprofits walk in the room, and they walk out with millions of dollars, but we sit here and watch some people that are having a problem that can't do something, and we can't figure out how to fix it. Now, it's time to fix it, that's what I'm saying. If you don't like it, I'm sorry. I told you back when I voted for it, and people's mad because I voted for it, I told you. I was not, I was going to cancel my service because I couldn't, but I couldn't tell all these people that they couldn't have a service. There's tons of trash sitting on the side of the road. Broad River guys, as they live, you know, he told me a mile and a half from an area, and I don't know if this guy's part of him or not, but they had a place to put it, they put it that morning, it was picked up that morning, the bags were picked up. I want Waste Pro to make every... I want Waste Pro to make every dime. Don, you know, just stick our bags, or just furnish bags, or whatever you wanna furnish. But something besides these heavy cans that people can't pick up, period. If Waste Pro wants to go buy a bunch of bags, they can get them a lot cheaper than we can and distribute them to people to put out. That way they know it's their bag and it can be picked up. And, you know, if you got twelve houses in a neighborhood, and then the second week, you try to put something on somebody's property that's allowing you to put the bags, how you gonna put twenty four cans and then pick them up? The one armed bandit ain't gonna pick all them up because they're gonna be sitting in different, you know, a, a smaller area back to back. We're gonna have to separate them to get to them. But I've heard this over and over. Now I wanna hear something that's gonna help the people because that's like I said, I'm tired of people walking in this room and walking out with millions of dollars. And we got people walking in this room that are elderly, like me, call anything you want, older elderly, that can't get a can downhill. What are we gonna do with the person that tries to get the can downhill, and they fall and break a hip? We ain't gonna do nothing for them. They just go to the hospital, nursing home, whatever. No, we're not thinking in the right form here. And, you know, any questions that, that I've heard tonight? The same answers you're given, the same thing that I've heard over and over and over again. And I don't wanna hear them over and over and over again. I wanna see something done. So, we as commissioners need to figure out what we can do, you know? We don't need to worry about solar panels today. We need to worry about the old people and how to get their trash out of the yard. We don't need to be spending money in certain areas that, that, that we could care less about right now. I'm sorry, you know, but I am sorry, I'm telling the people here, I'm sorry for, for what you're having to go through. You know, some didn't speak. I see them sitting here, but I'm sure glad you came. And I, I, I don't, I've got a note here, somebody writ, had written to me. I don't know if you're in the audience or not, but it, it explains a whole lot, you know? And, uh, I guess they had to leave because it took us long to get out of the back. But I, you know, I don't know if the gentleman was here, that, with, I had a gentleman in Fairview with a cane. He couldn't hardly walk out of the building. And he said, we gotta do something. He said, I, I, you know, he said, I can't get the trash can down there. What am I gonna do? So, figure something out. We made a bad decision, okay? Chip, need some help. We've cost a little bit more money? Hey, let's come up with some more money and try to help our people that, that are out here. We can come up millions of dollars for kids and this and that, but we can't get to come up with a damn nickel for the elderly. Thank you.
Dane, do you have any other, any other comments you'd wanna share?
Well, thank you for those comments, Commissioner. Yeah, and, and one of the considerations as well is, as it has been for a long time with the containers. You know, it's, it's, it's technically a non-conforming use to have bags on the ground. So that's, that's something we were obviously conscious of, um, with our ordinance, is that, that is a non-conforming use. So those are things that, you know, we also had to consider, uh, making sure that it's in a fly resistant and, uh, water resistant container. So that's, uh.
Now, when you say it's a non-conforming use, I'm sorry, what does that, what does that mean exactly?
Well, there's nothing in ordinance that allows folks to place bags directly on the ground now. Obviously, it happens a lot. So, you know, the container size that's spelled out in our solid waste ordinance is, uh, for that to be in a container, period. And for that to be fly resistant and water resistant. So, that was, you know, same things we've talked about in the past with providing containers. We knew that that would meet the, uh, environmental code compliance as well as work with the trucks.
All right.
I just wanna thank you, Dane. I know for every email that was addressed only to me as a commissioner, not to a group that I forwarded to you, that you personally called and responded back to each of those emails. And I know that was a lot of time on your part, and I really appreciate it. Thank you very much. And Johnny Lee at Waste Pro as well responded personally to everyone that I forwarded to him as well. So, I wanna pass that thank you along to him as well.
Thank you, Commissioner.
But, uh, one more thing.
Let's let the other commissioners comment. You haven't commented yet. Uh, Commissioner Whitesides?
One of the concerns that I have, I think back when we did this in the city where it's mandatory. One of the problems I see here though, and the main problem, because I read all the emails that come by, and boy, it's been a lot. But I think we've got a communication problem, folks. And on over, I'd say seventy percent of the emails that I read, people have complaints. And it's things that I believe can be worked out from what you've said, but they can't get through. That nobody's on the other end of the line, or it's busy, or they can't. I even tried to call the number ones, and I agree. I know the problem. We can't get through. What can we do to remedy that? Because I think a lot of it, we can solve a lot of these problems with the lady, and she's, Rick, she can't take, bring the can back and forth. But when you mention a doctor's, you know, a certificate from the doctor and all, that's great. But if we can't get to anybody to tell them this and to work that out, boom, we got the problem. That's my concern. It's just basic. How do we get through?
If you were my neighbor, your bag would be in my, in mine. Don't want Waste Pro hearing none of that. But your bag would be in my can.
Yeah.
If you was my neighbor. And, and, you know, we, I don't, I'm not gonna get on that horse because I'll be on here a long time about, I am not, you, you're glad. I can't, I can't get on that. But here's what, what I'm hearing. I, I didn't mean to interrupt you. You keep going.
Yeah, but that's my concern. What can we do with the communication to make sure that when people do have a complaint, a problem that they need worked out, that they can get it done? And not that they have to go through Florida, God knows where, to get it done. You know, can we have a dedicated line, or three lines, or whatever it takes here in Buncombe County? I think that's, that's a big part of the frustration that everybody has. And I agree with what several commissioners have. You know, we're going over and over this, but it looks like to me, let's go back to the basics and see what we can work out in the communication and doing that. Because I remember we complained about them in Asheville when we did it, all of us, with the cans. Now we wouldn't have it any other way. And we have some, if you go to Town Mountain Road in some of the areas, we have some, I wouldn't wanna have to go up the driveways, so it's tough. But we could get through and talk to people. And I think that's one of the problems I see. It's just basic communication. I'm through.
Uh, Commissioner Presley?
Uh, Commissioner Whitesides covered.
Yeah, I think all of us has covered everything. I just wanna thank, you know, Waste Pro for stepping up and taking this because a lot of us gotta understand, no one else bided on this, you know? At least we're gonna have someone picking up some trash if you've canceled or whatever. But, but Dane, the couple of questions being brought up, the vandalism of them, who's responsible for that? Like, you know, there's difference of going down the city at fifteen mile an hour and sucking a trash can out in the road, but going down seventy four or nineteen twenty three, and someone hits it. I agree. Somebody's gotta be responsible. I mean, there's so many questions here, and we didn't go over it with everybody. But I agree with what Don Yatton said, probably made the most sense of everything. It's just, let's put it on hold and find a solution for this. And I think with the commissioners, Waste Pro, yourself, Dane, we can fix this problem. You know, it was something thrown out on everyone that this is the way it's gonna be. And I think everyone needs to understand, the bags, whenever you're picking them up, and there are glass in them, and the guy in the back getting stabbed with a needle, or, you know, our truck driver, thirty eight deaths of off the back of them trucks. I mean, there is a solution, and I think we and everyone here can fix it if the communication, like Commissioner Whitesides said, that fixes a lot of trouble. Go back to what Joe Belcher always says, do the math, you know?
So, let me, let me say this, okay? I don't want anybody to forget, we have a contract, right?
Yes, sir.
We have a contract with Waste Pro. These exceptions have been brought up, correct? In that contract, Waste Pro is responsible to deal with these, um, exceptions. Is that correct?
So the exceptions?
Whatever exceptions they are, they're, they're supposed to handle them. You know, that's not, I mean, you know, my email, my phone, people call me if they want to, and they should. But that contract is with Waste Pro. We've said this before. They have a contract. They have, and, and they're the only ones that bid this contract. And I don't disagree with, with some of what, with, with Commissioner Friar, these are, each of these are problems. Each one has a solution. And so what should be done is each of these issues that were brought up tonight, which are, can and, and will always be very emotional. They should be dealt with in a factual manner. What Commissioner Whitesides said was not a bad idea. If it takes adding two lines, it takes adding three lines, you add three lines, you know, it's not a, it's, that's not hard to pull off, right? I mean, when you was, in, in your former company and I was in mine, that's what you would do. You would deal, you got a contract. We entered into that contract because there was, there was some very serious reasons, and it was the best negotiated contract, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's why, and every commissioner voted for it. And they probably nodded their heads on that. But there, each of these exceptions should be dealt with, and we should be reported back to us that they have been dealt with. To me, that's pretty simple, you know? Whether it's a short driveway, long driveway, concern with the size of the, the can, each person has their concerns, and we should enter into that. There has been teeth put in this contract. I mean, and, and we have used it, haven't we, Dane? It, it has been used, and Waste Pro responded very positively to that, so. Uh, but, uh, you know, rather than being, getting, rather than our board getting very emotional on each of these items, and we should, but we gotta get past the emotion, jot down the facts, and fix it. Fix it, whatever it is. If it's communication, no problem. Add some lines, fix it, okay? If we've got a, if we've got a couple that can't get their trash, we figure out a way to do it, you know? And, uh, and I, and I think, I know your team is sharp enough to do it. And I know that, that, that Waste Pro is the experts in doing that too. Not the first time that they've heard any of these, uh, issues, I'm sure. But we should document them and then, uh, find a solution for them, and then just report back to the commission. And we got time between now and January. We can work out these things. So, I'll hush.
Commissioner Friar? Oh, Avril, okay, sure.
My point was gonna be that we have done a lot of the questions, the answers, and we have come up with answers to all of the questions. The answers to those, Commissioner Friar's point, you've heard them over and over, but they're not acceptable. So if you want us to go back to the drawing board and talk to the contractor again, we can do that. But we have found answers to the majority of the questions, and we have made them pointed clear. And we have also added lines that they can answer. So we have done.
We have added them at the county level?
Not at the county, not at the county level. It has been, the contractor has increased the lines to his contract for his call center. He has a call center, so people can now get through. But when, when we come back to the answers to the questions that has been raised, we have solutions to them, but they're not acceptable. So, we're here again. So I would like some consensus from the board of where you want us to go and what you want us to do, and we will work on that.
Okay. I have a note up here that was written to me. I haven't written, written a double thing yet, but it's, you know, it was, I guess it was left when people left. But we have people out there that have bare containers. Now they're gonna cost three hundred dollars to get them another bare container, you know? Excuse me. So, can I, can I say one thing on that? It'll help you. Don't look at me like you're gonna eat me. It'll help you, okay? If, how many of those do we have? I keep, I keep hearing that. I keep, you know, with all due respect to the county manager, I heard what you said. How many bare containers we got? How many would we have to replace, okay? The emotion is, well, by gosh, I got a bare container, and what am I gonna do about it? And how much is it? Got it. But how many we got? We got five? We got ten? If we got ten, that's three thousand dollars. I'll, I'll, I'll replace it. I mean, I don't know how many we got. I have no idea. So I just want the facts. So there may be a zillion of them out there. I don't know. But I'd like, I'd like to know what that is. If that's a real issue, here's what I'm saying. Document it. Tell me how many it is so we can get beyond the emotional part of it, okay? And then we do the math, and we figure out, to, to Commissioner's point, you know, he got on some other things, uh, uh, Mike about that the commission has paid for, which is, which is true. Not everybody supported, some did. But we do the math. How much is it gonna cost to fix these issues? And, um, you know, and, you know, I have a question. I haven't heard, what do I do with my old one? Nobody raised that up. Maybe you did, but I hadn't heard that. My wife's asked that one. What do we do with the old one that we got?
Yes, and, and that is in the works now. We're gonna provide the opportunity for, um, to recycle as many of those containers as we can. We're gonna look at a timeframe, not just a day to do that. We want, we wanna draw that out for folks so they have opportunity over time. And what we're targeting right now is the transfer station and landfill for folks to be able to bring those containers to us, no charge. And we're gonna work with a recycler, uh, out of the Charlotte area that we're working with Chip, uh, with Waste Pro on, to be able to recycle, uh, as many of those units as we can.
Let me give you easier way to do it, and I don't want, I really don't want this going on, I, but I'll stay here if I need to. Give us a tag. I'll tag them, put them out there, and let them just come by and pick them up. Just put a tag on it. You know, it's a bright orange tag. It's recyclable, whatever it is. You know, we'll just zip tie that sucker to it, and they can come out and get it. That way we, everybody doesn't have to go to the, to the landfill, because they're, you know, people gonna pitch a fit about that. If we put a email out that says, okay, here's what you're gonna do with your recyclable, you can take it to the landfill, have a nice day, we're gonna get emails like crazy on that. And, uh, and this is just what I used to call green light thinking and thoughts and processes and stuff. I, I wanna comment to, to Dane that, um, you know, your, your concerns should be brought to us. And, and we should do our best to work with Waste Pro and fix them. But y'all have worked hard on this contract, and, uh, I wanna thank you for the work that you're doing and the way you're taking these concerns. And I know you really care about it, and I appreciate it. So we just gotta, you know, get, get beyond the, see, I don't know, I don't know the exact, the exact number of, and I just wanna, I just wanna see the facts. Because this is very emotional. I mean, you're talking about folks that, you know, that are, that are, that are old and, you know? I mean, goodness, I'm sixty four.
I got you beat.
Yeah, you got me beat. But anyhow, I don't wanna get into all that.
Go ahead.
I'm coming back.
I said, go ahead.
Okay. We have people out there that, you know, pretty well Waste Pro. I've got a neighbor that's got a new ninety six gallon can. It's black. And I've asked Chip, I had a meeting with him the other day. I said, why can't we just put a Waste Pro sticker on top of it with a number? Instead of having them to have to go buy, or not buy, but have these two different cans. Uh, so my neighbor has got all this money involved. I got a lady that lives behind me that's got a thirty three gallon, which I could probably pull up my driveway, that will work on the back of these trucks. It flips them in the trash end of the back of the truck. And they paid seventy five dollars for their can. Now what are they gonna do with it? Why do you wanna take a seventy five dollar can and take it and get it recycled? I got one of wore the bottom out of. It's took about thirty years, but it still holds two white bags of trash really good. And, you know, it's like I said, we can figure it out, but it's not figured out yet. I don't care what anybody says. I'm still looking at these people, and I spoke to everyone that sent me an email. If it had a number on it, I didn't send it to Dane. I called them, and they, they came back to me. So, uh, that's where I'm at, and, and that's why I have this job.
Why don't we, uh, got a representative from Waste Pro here, taking all this in, and I'm sure you, obviously y'all have been listening to this. So, um, thanks for being here. Chip, do you have any observations you wanna share with us? This is, this is a new contract, and obviously everyone's starting to live into it, seeing what's working well, seeing some of the issues. So, uh, thank you for being here. Do you have any, um, this, you know, we're not, I don't think, this is just on the agenda for discussion and listening to the public. I don't, I don't anticipate we're gonna take any specific action tonight, but we appreciate the chance to continue talking about it. And we welcome any thoughts you have to share with us tonight.
Well, you know, we, we appreciate, um, the opportunity to serve the county. And, uh, we're definitely working with the staff to resolve as many of these issues as possible. I, I wish we'd had some of these discussions prior to, you know, the execution of the agreement. You know, now a lot is underway. You know, trucks have been ordered, a lot of cost have, have gone forward. So, you know, I, I understand, uh, we'll just continue to work with the staff and hopefully come up with, uh, the solutions that you're looking for. It's not always as easy as it seems, you know, just like the thirty five gallon containers. You know, the automated trucks, you know, you have to think about. you know, you have to think about, they're picking up a 96, 64, 48. So then you get down to a 35 size gallon container. Oftentimes those fall in the back of the truck. Which would mean that we need to change, uh, you know, the types, the style trucks, uh, that would have to pick it up. Would change the type of service that we have to offer. And there's a lot that goes into that. So, you know, I think those are the questions that, uh, you know, it sounds like your, your county manager was actually kinda pointing to that, you know, if we're gonna have real discussion about those things, you know, we'd have to be open to, uh, making some serious changes and, and understand that that could impact a lot of different things, so. We're here for you. We want, uh, to be a good partner to the county. And, uh, we're, we're happy to be here, so.
But Chip, we had a good meeting.
Yes, sir.
And, but what I'm saying in here is I'm not trying to hurt Waste Pro.
Correct.
Period. I'm trying to help other people. And it's like I said, we spend millions of dollars sitting up here to do stuff for other people. There's got to be some room somewhere that we can put some money out there to help Waste Pro and Dane and whatever, to be able to pick these, you know, get up these hills to pick these people's trash up. That's, they are the residents. They're the one that made this county, okay? You know, everybody says children. Well, you got your children, we're all children. Then you become adults and you have children and you have grandchildren. Then you become people that need help again. And we have people that need help. Whether Waste Pro wants to do it or the county wants to do it, I, I work for the county. And I'm sitting here saying, you know, we have to be able to help the people. You know, we can give money away to mountain housing or we give stuff away for them to go fix, you know, houses where they can have a little better heat, but we can't help them get their trash down to the road. So there's a problem in that. And, you know, I've been on it and I'm, you know, it's a, it's a serious item, far as I'm concerned. But, you know, if we can give $85,000 to somebody to go put some insulation in somewhere, then we can give $85,000 to be able to go pick some people's stuff up. Have a good day. Thank you.
So, um, you know, just a couple of thoughts. You know, this, we have, we have entered into an agreement. We did an open request for proposals, asked everyone in this industry to bring proposals forward. Several were interested, but at the end of the day, Waste Pro was the only one that really submitted a comprehensive and complete proposal. And we negotiated with them. And, um, I think the issues that and concerns that folks are raising are very practical and very real. And I think they, you know, they resonate with us. And if there are things that we can do, um, then I think we're all, including Waste Pro, I think everyone's eager to have the best system we possibly can. There are, there are trade-offs. I mean, some of these different, these different decisions that are made around, you know, just having bags on the ground or having a system where everyone's putting their trash in bags that can be automate, you know, lifted up in an automated process. There are trade-offs here. I think, you know, we had a citizen commission that Don Yelton, um, served on and brought these recommendations to us and urged us to vote for this agreement, right? We were aware of some of these trade-offs when these issues came forward. If there are things that we can do to improve this, um, I think everyone is interested in doing that. Part of what we have to wrestle with is that this is, um, this is an enterprise fund. This is a system where, you know, the city of Asheville, if you live in the city, you pay your taxes and the city will come get your trash for you and your recycling. It's part of what you pay your taxes for. But in the unincorporated areas of the county, this isn't county government doing it. We contract with a private sector provider to do it and, and not everyone's required to participate. Not all taxpayers participate in the system. Customers choose to join to, to have this service. And we, part of what we were interested in was negotiating the lowest possible price for the customers as a whole. No doubt, there are some things that could be done to address some of these specific, uh, service issues. Some of them might cost more money. If we, if we choose to do some of those, it would probably mean that the cost for the overall service would need to be different than what it was when we landed upon the, the levels of service that are in the current contract. And that's not to say that they shouldn't be considered, but part of our concern was trying to keep the costs down. And if we make certain changes, it'll, it will raise the cost for all the subscribers to the system. And there's just, you know, that's just the, the math of it. And, um, so I, I just, I just wanted to share a few thoughts that this is, it's a new, it's a new agreement. I'm confident that we can find some solutions to some of these issues. And I appreciate everyone bringing them to us, um, so that we can hear them and figure out which ones, um, we can, we can do some things about. Others, you know, um, maybe, maybe harder to tackle in the short term. But thanks for bringing this forward. We're listening. I know Waste Pro's listening and, uh, we will, we will continue to do so. And I guess I would just say to the staff, I don't know that there's any, you know, very specific guidance that I've, I've got, but just other than to just please kinda take these, continue to take these concerns in and think about which ones we might be able to, uh, you know, to act on and, and either within the context of the current agreement or if any, you know, possible discussions might be, might be warranted. So that's, that's my, that's my perspective as a, as one commissioner. Any other final thoughts before we move on to the next, uh, the next item?
Just, I appreciate your framing that, Brownie. I think one thing that would be helpful is to try to get a sense of the volume of concerns and complaints that we're hearing. It's, it's hard to, you get dozens of emails and it feels like everyone's having a terrible problem, but you wanna just get a sense of that. So if there's any data available about the rate of people who are electing to unsubscribe or the, if you're logging calls and, um, able to sort of individuate them, that kind of information would be really helpful, I think, to get a better handle on the number of folks in our community who are really struggling to figure out where they fit into the system and really facing tough decisions about whether to stay subscribed, pay extra or unsubscribe and, and kinda use the other options. So that's the one specific request I'd have that might help us kinda zero in, as, as Commissioner Belcher said, zero in a little bit on what exactly we're dealing with and how we can co-opt some, some potentially additional fixes and resources.
So that's where I was coming from. You know, I would document every email. I would document every call. I would categorize them and I would see, you know, how many are repetitive and how many of them are, are, uh, in a situation where it's a dire need. And then we just look at it and, you know, and, and categorize them and go, go from there. And, um, if we wanna invest in those, then we make that decision. If we, if we can't, then we make that decision also. But we, we would have that information and, you know, that would be information we would, we would be able to, we'd be able to act on it. And like I said, it takes a lot of the emotion. I know, but you got the facts, so.
I do have one specific question. And this goes back to something that was touched on earlier. But, uh, one of the most, um, one of the most common complaints I have heard is from the folks who have invested in the more expensive containers, the bear-proofed containers, and who, um, uh, have heartburn over not being able to use their containers. And I understand that, you know, whatever system of receptacles that are out there, they have to be compatible with your automated system. So, you know, some of the folks who have contacted me have, have said, well, I, I think that this is, I think that, I think that the model I have is, is, will work with that. So, and, and I'm sure it's desirable to have everything look and the same from a pickup standpoint, but these are, they are expensive. So I, is that something that, that you guys have been looking at? And is there any potential way for, for folks who have already invested in one of these more expensive containers to, uh, to look and see if they would be, if they can work in the system and if perhaps some kinda way of designating them, you know, as Waste Pro customers might be, might be feasible?
Yes, sir. We, we are working with the county on that, uh, on some different options. Some different pricing options. One thing that we're careful about is, you know, as we worked on our proposal for the county, the whole program, uh, is important in how it's handled. It's important for us that we have identifiable Waste Pro containers. You know, there's a large percentage out there that, uh, unfortunately, as the system is now, are not paying customers. I know that you find it hard to believe, but a lot, a lot. You know, we have a lot of roads where we have, you know, 10 homes on the road and two homes are paying, okay? But we have 12 homes of trash at the bottom. You know, so this is an opportunity for us, uh, to, to work on, you know, getting that standard. And we took those, those factors into consideration with our price and our proposal. But we are working with the staff. We think that we're close to coming up with several viable solutions. You know, some people do have compatible containers. I, I talked to a lady today that she had a compatible container. But please understand, you know, that was part of our reasoning with that, that we wanted containers that we could identify. And that would help us to make sure that we were picking up paying customers.
I totally understand that. I appreciate you looking at it. And if there's some way, at least maybe for some period of time, to have some interim ways that for folks who have purchased these in the, you know, in the recent past, to be able to get some value out of them, we appreciate your consideration of it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, commissioners, and again, to all the folks from the public who came out tonight, thank you for, thank you for being with us. It's very valuable to us. All right, um, next item on the agenda is the affordable housing recognition. And Nate Pennington will present this item.
Thank you, uh, chair, commissioners and members of the public. I'm just gonna be brief real quick, uh, just to go over a recognition that the, um, planning department's participated in. There's just a couple of slides I'll touch on real quick. And I'm just gonna flip to a couple here. The, um, planning department worked on a couple of different initiatives recently. And one was, um, a community ordinance and development. This was, uh, in our zoning ordinance, we've spoken about this before. Actually, the East Haven project that's under construction in Swananoa took advantage of this, uh, program. And we were recently featured, uh, just last year in an ACO publication as a case study. Sometime after that, we were reached out to from the University of Utah through an, uh, what was called an Ivory Prize. This is the first year of this, um, this, uh, prize. It basically, this is a map just of the distribution of the applications received. This is in conjunction with the University of Utah as well as Harvard. Basically what it did is it recognizes that, um, not only is it gateway communities that struggle with affordable housing, but it's a problem throughout the nation. And it traces back to even, uh, during the Great Recession when we really lost track of, um, supply and demand. So we're really essentially still trying to catch up in that regard. The reason that they reached out to the county after they read the publication is they said, hey, you know, you guys came up with something that was innovative. We obviously have to work with whatever statutes, uh, and guidelines were given from, uh, from the state. So what we did was we, uh, sat down collectively as a staff. We tried to innovate and come up with some ideas that were within our means. And, um, we were invited to apply for the prize and we placed in the top 10 across the country. We were the only government entity to be chosen and therefore wanted to just bring to your attention that on November the 15th, um, myself along with Cynthia Fox Clark from Planning will be presenting as part of a roundtable. It will be livestreamed. This is the website. You can, you can click on that. And we'll be, um, representing Buncombe County at Harvard. A couple of staff were here earlier. They had to go to attend to some children issues. But, uh, I'm here. And I don't wanna take up any more of your time. If you have any questions, just, uh, let, let us know. We'll be happy to help out.
Congratulations. That's great. Great job, guys. Really appreciate it. All right, and, uh, next item on the agenda is a financial quarterly report. And Don Moore, our finance director, will present this item.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Or is it good night now? Max, go ahead and start the, what are they for? Okay, so this is the, uh, fourth quarter financial report, unaudited. As you know, the auditors are on site now and they are in the midst of finishing that up. So we should be done with that by October 31st. And then we will come back with an actual audited end-of-year financial report, the CAFR, for you to review. But I wanted to give you an update on where we ended. Now that we have all the revenues received and all the accruals have been booked, uh, we're gonna go over the general fund, budget, actual, and also touch on the solid waste. So as you can see, we ended the year, well, I shouldn't say that, we ended the year, but we're not officially ended, just so you know. Uh, total amended budget was 325 million, total actual is 310. We ended about 96% expended. This is at the functional level, which is the level at which we budget. And we came in under budget in every category. So that is a good thing. We did not violate any budget laws, which means we have no findings when it's time to look at this. The other important thing to note is 96% is pretty good. If you look at the top 10 counties out there, uh, last two years, they've been at about 94 to 95% on average. So we did pretty good as far as figuring out where we're gonna be with budget. The next slide, uh, next slide, uh, breaks it down by category. So this is a lot easier to, uh, talk about, cause this is looking at our salaries and benefits, operating expenditures, program support and that sort of thing. And I wanted to give you a kind of, uh, information on why various categories came in under budget. So if we were to look at, uh, the benefits, salary benefits, the main reason for that coming under budget is due to an accounting change. So in 2017, the end of 2017, HR made the change so that when you were paying for your health insurance out of your paycheck, you were no longer prepaying it, you're paying for the current month. Now, what that meant is when we get to the end of the year, we don't have to do the year-end accrual, which is where we go and take that first pay period and pull it back into the current year. However, we budgeted for that. So since we budgeted but didn't have to do it, it ended up saving us, um, about $3 million, a little over, because we didn't have to do that accrual. Other savings included, uh, office expense. So we have 38 cost centers. 31 of them came in under budget, uh, on an average of about $20,000. So people are being frugal with their money. They're spending it the way we need to, we need them to spend it. Another area is maintenance and repairs. So we always budget every year anticipating that we're going to be doing whatever maintenance, repairs on equipment, that sort of thing. Sometimes we don't do it, so therefore we have budget savings. And we actually saved about a million dollars in budget for that category. The other big category, uh, contract and professional services, we saved about 2.2 million. And this is the combination of either we, we're going to do something, we're gonna contract out with somebody to do it and we didn't have time, because you know how it is. We have great plans at budget time. We're gonna get all this stuff done. And then when everything happens or changes come from you all or management or whatever, then we have to put things on hold, so we don't necessarily end up doing all that that we anticipated doing. I guess I should've went to that slide. It'd been helpful. Now, as far as the budget, we do have some carryover. So there were some items that we had started, but, uh, we carried over and you guys approved that actually at the last meeting. And then on the revenue side, uh, we did really well. So we budgeted 325 million, but that included appropriated fund balance. So if we back out the appropriated fund balance, our true revenue budget would have been 312 million. And year-to-date, actual collections were 321 million. So we almost 103% of budget. So not surprising, because when you budget revenues, you're definitely going to do it on a more conservative basis. And then property tax is budgeted based on Keith's best assessment at the time we're doing the budget. But he doesn't finalize the assessed values until after we've already adopted the budget. So there's always gonna be a little bit more there. We collected about a million dollars extra in revenue for property tax. Sales tax came in stronger than we budgeted at about 3.4%. And then investment earnings really came in strong because of the interest rates going up. Now, the Fed has reduced interest rates, so I wouldn't count on 2020 being that great. We got about 1.7 million extra just from investment earnings. I keep forgetting I had this slide in there. It's been a long time since I did this. So this shows the different categories of growth. Is there any questions on the general fund? All right. Moving on to solid waste. We had a budget there of 9.8 million. Total actual expenditure, 7.7, so about 78%. Now, as we all heard, solid waste is a business essentially. So we only spend what we really need to do. Dane did a good job managing his costs. A lot of this is attributable to maintenance and repairs. It didn't have to occur. Some contracts for professional services, so the switch from Wiseman to SCS. Some contracts for professional services, so the switch from Wiseman to SCS actually had quite a bit of savings. The closure cost, post-closure cost, that sort of thing, saved us quite a bit of money. And then they had the same issue with the benefits, so we didn't have to do that accrual. And then if you look at the revenues, did pretty well, 102.4% of budget. And the biggest contributors to that are the investment earnings, which gave us about 275,000 extra, and then other taxes and licenses, which is the scrap tires, white goods tax, and the solid waste tax. Those came in higher than anticipated. And then our miscellaneous revenue, which includes the renewable energy credits from our gas generation, came in a little bit higher as well. We got about 34, almost 35,000 extra there. Have any questions on the fourth quarter? Are you still awake?
We are awake.
This is, this is good stuff right here.
We are.
All right. Thank you very much.
I think, Don, any questions?
The revenue increase is a good news. You know, the sales tax, that's just, you know, we're just reaping that benefit right now, and, you know, and we'll, and that can be a help to taxpayers next year.
Absolutely.
It absolutely can. I mean, we were worried about fund balance, you know, and it was, it was what we should have been, been doing, but, but the money come in.
Yeah, and as you talk about fund balance, you know, we budget and appropriate fund balance. Well, I know every year it looks like, okay, well, we budget all this fund balance, we say we're going to use it, but then we never use it. Pretty common practice, because we're going to be conservative on the revenue side, we're going to be conservative on the expenditure side. So the only way you can really balance that is by fund balance. When you get actually into the year and you get towards the end, you realize you're not going to use as much, and then when we get to the final numbers, you can see we're going to actually be contributing money back in to fund balance. So it's fantastic news for the county.
Yeah, and I think, you know, and I'll make, I'll make this point probably, probably this year, and maybe not, is that not last year, but the year before, we took a tax cut. We gave a real tax cut, and people were concerned about that. But because of the economy and the revenue, and actually what the people out, out here did, and was able to create, it was, it was fine, and it was doable, so it's, it's good news on the, on the numbers. Thanks.
Don, can you help us understand on the county capital projects? There's two in particular, and I know, as you said, things happen, but can you give us an updated timeline on when those can be expected to start, completion? I'm specifically looking at the Owen Park exercise stations that zero's been expended, as well as the elections training room has 0%. And then at 0.4% is the detention center repair and cleaning.
I cannot answer when those projects are going to be moving forward. That would be General Services that handles those. I don't know the timing, and if they've got them bid or anything. Avril, do you have any?
I don't have specific details on all of them. What was the second one you said?
The Owen Park exercise stations, the elections training room, and then the detention center exterior repair and cleaning, only 12,000 of the 2.7 has been spent.
We'll follow up on those two, but specifically on the training room, there are two line items in the budget, and it's being coded to the second. So that is part of the Hughes Building Capitol Project.
That's good to know.
So that work is done, almost completed. It should be moving in shortly.
Okay.
But there were two separate line items, so that's why one was being charged to the second line item.
To the second.
So that specific project, I did notice that.
Yeah, that's really helpful.
Because I noticed that I walked through the work, and the work was done, so I did notice that, that one.
But no, it's right.
But the other two, we will follow up on and get you an answer on that one.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll shoot out an email to all of you in the morning.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Next item is a resolution authorizing 2020 Census partnership, and Tim Love will present this item.
So moved. Oh, sorry.
Is there a second?
Jumping ahead on me, Commissioner.
We could do that, but we're not.
Yeah, we're not. We'll let you do it.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. This evening, we'd like to talk about the 2020 Census. For this presentation, you've heard from me before, but I have a new face to introduce to you, and that is Dr. Debbie Reese, who's sitting here patiently waiting her turn.
She tried to, she tried to go to dinner with me in the, in the hallway. She tried to get me to buy her dinner. You did. I was going to check the place. She said, give me a sandwich.
She will school you on the Constitution, so be careful.
Too much information.
With that said, Dr. Reese comes from us, from the Federal Census Bureau. She is located locally here in nearby Cherokee County. So I'll share a few notes with you, and then we'll turn it over to her to share with you kind of the value of this partnership, and why the census is so important to the Federal Census Bureau. But the few things I wanted to say, I just wanted to remind you that we briefed you on this before. You know, this evening, we are asking you to approve or authorize a resolution as it relates to partnership with the census. We're not asking for any funding or anything of that nature. It's just affirming that this board supports the, the objectives of the federal government's census. So once Debbie concludes her presentation, I will come back to you and ask you for that approval. But at this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Reese.
Thanks, Tim. Now, I did prepare some folders for you that, do you have them?
We do.
Okay, great. So I'm Debbie Denise Reese, and I'm your Partnership Specialist for the 2020 Census. As a Partnership Specialist, I join the nation's largest peacetime mobilization of its workforce. At its conclusion, it will be 500,000 strong, half a million strong, all dedicated toward one mission, and that is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place, and in support of just one goal, and that is a complete and accurate count. Now, as a Partnership Specialist, my job is to educate, encourage, and engage. So that's what I'll try to do briefly tonight. And as I began this position, I found that a decennial census like the 2020 census is a pillar of United States democracy. And I wondered, why is that? And I found, we, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this constitution for the United States of America. In Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3 of that constitution, the founders mandated a decennial census, a population headcount to occur every 10 years. Now, why? Why is that so important and fundamental to our democracy that it was written into Article 1 of the Constitution? Well, it's all in that preamble, to establish justice, to ensure domestic tranquility, and to provide for the general welfare. Now, at the time of the founding, in order to ensure domestic tranquility, we had to have just representation. And how did they do that? The idea was to have a population headcount, and then use that headcount to determine the number of seats per state in the U.S. House of Representatives, and along with that, the number of electors in the Electoral College. Now, at the time of the founding, in order to secure that blessing of liberty, we had a huge debt. And in order to pay that debt, to do that justly, the population headcount was used to equitably distribute that among the states. Now, the first census was conducted in 1790 during the first term of President George Washington, with Thomas Jefferson as the director of the census. And U.S. Marshals and their assistants went door-to-door knocking, and it took them 18 months to put the results, that population headcount, on the president's desk. Today, in 2020, for the first time ever, the population of the United States will be able to submit their census data on the internet. They can use a computer, a laptop, a mobile device. They can choose to submit by telephone, or they can choose to use the traditional paper form. Now, as in 1790, our population headcount, it's essential. It is used to determine the number of seats in the U.S. House of Representatives and the number of electors in the Electoral College. Now, the other component, just representation and just distribution of resources, which is what you've been talking about a lot tonight. Well, in 2020, we will have over $675 billion in resources to distribute among our population, and over 132 federal programs are determined by the population headcount. Now, the way it works is this, that Congress determines the size of the pie for each of those programs, how much money is going to the program, but the size of the slice that goes to the state and filters down to the county and the local program, that's determined by the population headcount. And when, in the state of North Carolina, or in this county, when there is an undercount, the size of the pie stays the same, but the size of the slice that's going to go to Buncombe County will be smaller. And that money doesn't just go back to the federal government, it's distributed among the other slices of the pies. The other thing that's really important is that we traditionally have an undercount of certain populations, not only children, 0 to 5, in those programs you're referring to, but seniors, veterans, people experiencing poverty, homelessness. Now, there are programs that are counted specifically distributed based upon the headcount of those subsections of the population. And when these traditionally undercounted populations come in undercounted, the benefits to which they are entitled are not received, for veterans, for seniors, for children, for low-income families. So in Buncombe County in 2000, our population self-response was about 74%. And in 75, in 2010, it was about 75%. That was the average for the country, about 75%. Now, that, that's certainly not good enough. For 2000, for 2020, the census has set a goal of 82%. But you know, I've lived in the Appalachian region for 23 years, in Virginia, West Virginia, North Carolina now, and I'm in western North Carolina, and I have been told over and over and over that people in western North Carolina always do everything 100%. Now, wouldn't it be great if in Buncombe County, we could get closer to 100% so that we could receive the benefits to which we're entitled? Now, the census has taken this integrated top-down, bottom-up approach to building a better count. Over the past few decades, the self-response has really gone down. I mean, it's about 50% in a lot of places in 2000. So what they've done is they've said, let's find leaders like yourselves, who are trusted voices, and let's tell them about the census, why it's important, that it's confidential, that census data are never, ever shared for the individual, that no federal agency, not the FBI, not ICE, no one has access to census data. They cannot even be subpoenaed. In fact, when we report the data, if the population for a certain segment is too small to allow those data for that whatever characteristic to be, to be indicated, that cell is left blank, so that the identities of individuals can never be determined. This is a fundamental law and a priority, a population headcount, so that we can have just representation, and the confidentiality and the safety of our citizens. So we identified these leaders, top-down, bottom-up, local leaders, but you know what? When you get down into the hollers, there isn't as much trust for government as there is from you people here. So what we need, what we need is endorsement at the top, leadership like you, so that that can filter down, so that when Tim and I go into these communities, when the subcommittees go into the communities, they can say, this is something that we, as a county, support, that we trust and believe in, and that these are benefits to which you're entitled, and you can't get them unless we report your data. And that is why tonight, Tim and I, and other members of the committee that have been working so hard since you first started on this enterprise, we're asking you to resolve that you will support this resolution, that you will resolve, that you will partner with the 2020 census, and that you support the Complete Count Committee, so that when we go out, we can say, we together in Buncombe County are working toward counting everybody once, only once, and in the right place for a complete and accurate count. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Reese.
Thank you, Dr. Reese. Before asking for your authorization, of course, open it up for questions, but want to leave you with two dates and one stat. And so the two dates, in mid-March, folks will start getting postal mailings in their mailboxes that indicate it's time to get ready for the census. On those mailings will be online information, as well as a phone number. And so as Dr. Reese said, this is the first time we'll be able to do this online, so super important to make sure that your constituents know that it's okay. If you receive a federal mailing from the Census Bureau, you can go to that website and complete that information. The other date that I would leave you with is April 1st. That's Census Day. That's when this all gets started. And then the stat I would leave you with, and these are estimated numbers, but a 1% increase in census response rate in Buncombe County is approximately 2,500 people. If we use a George Washington studies basis to estimate the dollar value of that, that's $1,600 per person, $4 million per year, and $40 million over a 10-year period to programs like Medicaid, Medicare, transportation. So there's some, some meaningful dollars here. With that said, if there's any questions, I'll take them now. If not, I would ask that you consider authorizing the resolution.
All right, thank you.
So I'll make that motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Reese and Tim.
Thank you.
Not on this item. We will take public comment in just a minute. All right, we have our board appointments. Those are, there are three vacancies on the Women's Commission.
I'd like to nominate Marielle Olson. Can we do all three at once? Darlene Azami and Carmen Yabara for appointment to the Women's Commission.
A second.
All right. Hearing no others, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, now we come to public comment. Folks are welcome to comment on any issues that we haven't already taken public comment on this evening. So you've got three minutes. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to the board? Ms. Yeldon.
Mine's going in about 25 different directions at one time, but the first thing I think of is the comment, "I'm with the government. I'm here to help you." And I looked at all the budget items today, and by the way, I appreciate the way the budget was presented in the minutes. Good job. Look at those charts. You see where we're spending money, don't you? You see the debt service, and that's a good job. But one thing that really bugs me, you talked about what can this county board do in terms of the Waste Pro contract? First and foremost, you, the county, need to know what the complaints are when they are made and as they're made. Picking up the phone and calling and talking to somebody in Gastonia or Charlotte doesn't ring well in today's world, and those of you that try to get service know what I'm talking about. It should be in this county, and that's something that you don't want to force on Waste Pro. They've already got that bid as low as they can get it, folks, because they do want the business. Period. End of discussion. So that information needs to come from Buncombe County. That's where you can put some money right now to find out, and then you can solve each of the problems individually. And I don't care what the law says, I don't care what anything says, if a little old lady only has one little bag of trash, she can buy a Dad Jim sticker and put on that bag and put it out. But it's almost like you are walking and talking against a brick wall. Everybody's saying, this is the way we're going to solve it, and this is the only way we're going to solve it, okay? I just heard two of them outside there. He said there've been over 20 people injured in Buncombe County this year on trash trucks. I made the suggestion, why don't we put a swing-out stop sign on a trash truck, so people can not go past them when they're picking up trash? He said, well, that's, that's another item, that's another, hey, folks, what are you all in charge of up there? You are the commissioners. You have the power to solve these problems, though you need to know what they are. That's why the calls need to be made to you. And by the way, an attorney, when he says that it's not the commissioner's job to know where the money goes, now we know why our court system is in the problem that it's in. So that is just a thought. So, that is just a thought to end on.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Rice? And after Mr. Rice, is there anyone else? All right, Mr. Rice, you will close us out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Money, you unfamiliar with money? One thing that's on my mind is county manager, her discretion on how money is being spent or used, and the amount of money that she's in control of going out. This has been a something that I have noticed over all the 30-some years I've been here. There's a lot of money that's being taken out. I'd like to see the sum of money that the discretion at the county manager level, even in the past 10 years, and just see the amount of money at the total at the end of the year that the county manager has approved, and, and expedited, that this board don't even know anything about, or either didn't vote on. I think Ellen Frost's attorney made a statement in the paper, said voting on every dollar spent is not how counties run. Well, that's a lawyer that don't know too much. But, at the same time, I think policy and procedure, and you've already covered a lot of this stuff in, in the things that's happened with the indictments and all, but I still think that it's needing some, some work done on it. I'd like to, I'd like to see something discussed about the discretionary money here. Because 40,000, 20,000, 10,000, 5,000, after a while, it adds up to a lot of money. So, little things is what you've got to pay attention to, the big ones, they're pretty much in your face. So thank you for listening.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a couple announcements. On October 15th at 3:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold their pre-meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326. And then that evening at 5:00 PM on October 15th, the county commissioners will hold the next regular meeting at 200 College Street, in Room 326. Thank you all for being with us, this meeting is adjourned.
You've got a closed session.
We, another one?
Yeah.
Okay. What's the topic?
The topic would be, again, to consult with an attorney retained by the board under North Carolina General Statute 143-318, Point 11A3, to discuss the matter of Irene Warren Kent, administratics of the estate of Michelle Quantel Smiley versus Van Duncan in his official capacity as the Sheriff of Buncombe County, Western Surety Company et al. And the site for that is CBS 18322.
All right, is there a motion to go to a closed session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We do not expect to take any action on this item, we expect when we come back from closed session to simply adjourn.